Thank you, and good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Petaluma City Council and the Petaluma Community Development Successor Agency for Monday, January 22. If you wish to provide comment on tonight’s agenda, please fill out a speaker card in the back of the chamber and bring it to the clerk at the front of the room. I’ll now invite Monica Aparicio and Maria Galvez to provide information to those who wish to participate in Spanish.
Thank you, good evening. Buenas noches, me llamo Monica y estoy aquí con mi pareja de interpretación, María. Estamos hoy aquí como intérpretes. Hoy este evento se llevará a cabo en español e inglés. Se usarán ambos idiomas activamente, así que usted podrá elegir un canal para participar en su idioma preferido después de que le hayamos explicado cómo funcionará la interpretación. Estaremos usando la función de interpretación de Zoom. Después de que termine esta explicación, se activará la función de interpretación. Si usted se está conectando con su computadora, verá un icono de un mundo en la parte inferior de su pantalla. Si usted se está conectando con su tableta o teléfono, pulse el más y verá un menú que incluye la opción de interpretación de idiomas. Para escuchar la interpretación, pulse el icono del mundo o interpretación de idiomas, y a continuación elija su canal de idioma. Thank you, all ready.
Thank you very much, and now I’d like to ask the city clerk to take roll call for the evening.
Barnacle.
President.
Kater Thompson.
Here.
Healy.
Here.
Now.
Here.
Posekay.
Here.
Shribs.
Absent.
And McDonald.
Here.
Let’s rise and have the pledge of allegiance. Moving on to our Agenda Changes Deletions item for the evening, I’m looking up and down the dais and I don’t believe we have any changes or deletions to our agenda, so we’ll move on from that item. And next, we will go to our general public comment. And during the general public comment, we will, the public is invited to make comment on items that are of public interest, that are within the city council’s subject matter jurisdiction, and that are not listed on the agenda. Public comments are limited up to three minutes, depending on the number of persons wishing to address the council. Time will be allocated in equal shares totaling no more than 20 minutes. I know I already have 16, 17 cards, so, let’s see. So I’d like to ask the city clerk if we received any comments prior to the meeting?
We did, we received five general public comments, and they are all posted online with our agenda.
Wonderful, thank you. And can I ask the moderator to read our messaging before we start?
At this time, I will start a 30-second clock for general public comment. Members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk’s desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments, and this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation. A countdown will appear for the convenience of the speaker and viewers.
Thank you, and as we have 16 cards. We have 16 cards in hand, that will lead us to having a one-minute for each person’s comments tonight, and I’d like to invite Eric Leland to speak first, to be followed by Mary Beth Leland. And please set the clock at one minute, thank you.
Thank you. I’d like to speak about the situation in Israel and Palestine and how it affects Petaluma. As you all know, I’ve worked for a year and a half on, focused on some hate speech issues, particularly around antisemitism in Sonoma and locally. And you may not know, or you may know, that antisemitism and hate speech, and also anti-Muslim hate, has risen dramatically in the county. The numbers are 400% for antisemitism and over 250% for anti-Muslim and anti-Palestinian hate. I think the city should consider and take up some sort of resolution against mass violence. As we know, retaliation using mass violence by the literature is not...
Thank you very much. A minute goes very, very fast. I apologize to everyone, but, and if someone has made the comment you wish to make, it’s often effective just to say, “I support what has been said earlier.” And the next speaker is Mary Beth Leland, to be followed by Alex Nemanges.
Thank you. I’d like to know why the city council has not passed a resolution supporting a ceasefire yet. If it’s because you haven’t had time to address it, this is going to keep taking up more time. If you’re not for a ceasefire, I think you should say so. If you don’t think city council should take a stand on international issues, you supported Ukraine. Our bridges are still lit up in yellow and blue. If it’s because some of your constituents don’t agree, pleasing everyone is not what politicians can do. You supported the painting of Black Lives Matter mural outside the library. You supported the LGBTQ crosswalk on Kentucky despite homophobic and racist constituents being vocal about their opposition. You can’t please everyone, but you can do what is right. Say I condemn killing innocent people. Say I condemn mass violence. Thank you.
Alex Nemanges, to be followed by Sandra Shan.
My name is Alex Camages. I’m here to talk about the conditions at the public pool, the swim center. My daughter is part of the AC Swim Club. They swim there six days a week, and the overall conditions I know are on your radar, and I know there are potentially some plans to upgrade the lighting and the heating, and something on the deck as well. And I’m just wondering if there’s any schedule anytime soon to implement those changes. Thank you.
And thank you, and for clarity, we don’t respond, generally speaking, at this time, but you can always submit those comments in writing and get responses, so that’s a good point. Sandra Shan, to be followed by Jamie Bloom.
Oh, I bring you greetings from a small Quaker meeting, which has a couple of members and attenders here in Petaluma. Eighty years ago, America stood mute in silent denial when warned of signs of the Holocaust, when one of the world’s most powerful military machines went insane and murdered our Jewish brothers and sisters. Some Americans spoke up to say, “Hey, it’s not our problem.” Most sane Americans now regret that. Here again today, we see clear signs of genocide, as one of the world’s most powerful military machines has gone insane, this time murdering our Palestinian brothers and sisters. Gaza has been turned into something eerily reminiscent of the Warsaw Ghetto with denial of food, shelter, water, medical care, and safe havens for civilians. The UN has called Gaza a graveyard for children. Please, the starvation of 2 million Palestinians is...
Thank you, your, one minute has expired. Appreciate your comments. Jamie Bloom, to be followed by Hindablass.
Good evening, council members. Jamie Bloom, resident of Petaluma. I’d encourage you not to take up a resolution, ceasefire resolution, but if you must, and if you do, I’d beseech you to work on it very hard and very carefully, so that it doesn’t end up causing more division and more strife than we already have in this town. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hindablass, to be followed by Ed Winston.
Don’t worry, I won’t show you everything up here, but I would love to. I want to show just one picture. This is a family, the Beavis family, with one survivor, who we do not know what the condition is. The child just turned one. I’m trying not to go on your heartstrings, but yes, I am. Maybe I am. As a grandmother of a redheaded child myself, it hurts very much when I hear the pallywood of what’s going, of what our media is. I’m asking the city council, I’m deploring, I’m begging, do not take up any agenda on a ceasefire. We need to get the hostages home. We need to be safe. We do not want another 1930s Nazi Europe to be happening around the world, as the step-grandchildren known as the Palestinians, Hamas, have been proven so, because their grandfather was Hadiya Husini, the partner of Hitler. I know I’m taking a lot of time. I think the city council should be...
Thank you, your time has expired. Ed Winston, to be followed by Tom Isaac.
Good evening. Hi, city council members. I know some of you, thanks for letting me speak. Couple things, what some of our colleagues on the pro ceasefire have forgotten, the Oslo Agreement, 2005, Israelis gave up land for peace. Well, that was your ceasefire. That went away. Number two, we have a lot of things going on in Petaluma. Don’t inject national politics into Petaluma with the ceasefire. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Isaac, to be followed by Ifti Ahmed.
Thank you. I have strong feelings about a resolution, but the point I wanted to make tonight is, I’m a lifer here in Petaluma, and I think it’s inconsistent with the culture, and not advisable in the times for the council to be sponsors of resolutions of such divisiveness. I think it sets up a future where you’re, where you will have very difficult questions to answer when others want resolutions, and it would be difficult, difficult, I think, to explain why this was the time for an international resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Ifti Ahmed, to be followed by Shalom Bachner.
A lot of our colleagues are saying that ceasefire or not ceasefire. Let me remind our Jewish friend and our Christian friend that there are 124,000 prophets came in this world to teach us about, to establish peace and justice. You never can happen, if you try to solve your war, establish peace by war. War is never a solution. You cannot establish order by disorder. So we have to have a ceasefire, and Petaluma will be affected. America will be affected by long-term war in some way or another. Many ways, we are a part of the global village. Today, we call this world a small world. It’s a small global village. It’s going to affect us in one way or other. So you don’t have to be a religious person or not, but you have to have a human being to save some other human being’s life. About more than 34,000 people have been killed in Palestine. More than 70% were women and children. They were not...
Thank you, the time has expired. And Shalom Bachner, to be followed by David Saul.
Good evening. My name is Shalom, and I’m the rabbi of the local Jewish center, which has been part of Petaluma for more than 160 years. Jews pray for peace three times a day, every day, and we have pursued peace for more than 3,000 years by understanding that all people are sacred, made in the image of the divine. Sadly, rather than peace, we have known the world’s oldest hate in the form of 3,000 years of anti-Jewish oppression and violence. It is the same hatred that seems to motivate Hamas, their funders in Iran, and their supporters around the world. I ask the city council to stay focused on those who live here, to respond to growing anti-Jewish hate here in this wonderful city, and to not entertain any resolutions which can add to local tensions. My request is for all of us to focus on peace and what brings people together. Let’s look for solutions globally and locally that are based on peace and dialogue. Thank you.
Thank you. David Saul, to be followed by Marsha Harris.
Good evening. We’d now like to read into the record a statement by San Francisco’s mayor, London Breed, who has eloquently summed up our feelings on a ceasefire resolution. As one person’s time expires, we will have the next speaker continue reading the statement into the record. As I said last week, I almost never comment on or engage with non-binding resolutions from the Board of Supervisors. This one warrants an exception. Since the Board of Supervisors introduced their Gaza ceasefire resolution, and certainly since they passed it last week, our city has been angrier, more divided, and less safe. Sadly, that may have been the point. Their exercise was never about bringing people together, it was about choosing a side, and while late amendments mitigated this, the damage was already done. At the board’s hearing on this resolution, one man spoke about his family members who were killed by Hamas on October 7th. People in the crowd made pig noises, devil horns with their hands, and screamed him to kill himself as he walked out of the chamber.
Thank you. And the next speaker is Marsha Harris, to be followed by Drew West.
Protesters sounded a Jewish city employee in the restroom to intimidate him, surrounded by a Jewish city employee in the restroom, to intimidate him, while he was doing nothing more than being present in his workplace. They shouted down and intimidated those who disagreed, including a legislator offering amendments citing the atrocities, atrocious acts of Hamas. As a supervisor candidate debate on Wednesday, a candidate brought up these instances at the board, and the crowd booed him loudly. When he mentioned the documented sexual violence committed by Hamas, people yelled “liar” and continued jeering him through the event. I think about that, and I wonder, what if we replaced Jewish with black, or gay, or Asian? Would anyone speak up? I hope we would. I hope we will now.
Thank you. Drew West, to be followed by Stuart Nissenbaum.
Excuse me. Thank you for letting us speak. If the woman who were murdered, raped, or otherwise brutalized by Hamas, teenagers, grandmothers, babies, weren’t Israeli women but Bay Area women, would we allow their friends and relatives to be shouted down as liars? Or would we say, “No, that’s too far. We can’t, we can disagree, but that’s just wrong.” No one in these crowds seems to be saying that. Sadly, demonization, heartlessness, and object antisemitism have, it seems, become politically and socially acceptable among a certain subset of activists.
Thank you. Stuart Nissenbaum, to be followed by Joe West.
Since October 7th, I have spoken with numerous Jewish San Franciscans, who tell me they don’t feel safe in their own city. They were afraid to attend the last board hearing, and they certainly wouldn’t attend another. They are fearful of the growing acts of vandalism and intimidation, and the targeting of Jewish-owned businesses. They are worried this is the beginning of something worse, right here in San Francisco. No one should feel unsafe in our community, and no one should think that while advocating for peace abroad, it’s okay to stoke division and hate at home. People I know and love have asked me to veto this resolution, to send a signal that must stop, that antisemitism we are seeing is unacceptable. I’ve grappled with this request for 10 days. It’s kept me up at night, and I’ve spoken with friends and faith leaders on all sides. I prayed for clarity, and were it not for today’s deadline, I would likely not continue to do so. A few...
Thank you. Next speaker is Joe West, to be followed by Sela Nissenbaum.
First, the Board of Supervisors should never have put our city in this position. City supervisors are neither elected nor qualified to undertake complex foreign policy. Frankly, neither are mayors, and it was naive to think two hearings and last-minute amendments were adequate to forge San Francisco’s official position on a crisis as fraught as this. We should be creating opportunities for conversation, for people to rally around our common values, advocate for peace, and support human life. We should be coming together, supporting each other, seeking the cohesion at home that we hope for abroad. The board has done the opposite, and I worry their irresponsibility will continue. Second, my heart breaks for the people of Gaza, the victims of this war on all sides, and their relatives and friends around the world. The loss of life, including children, the violence and destruction of homes and hospitals, are hard to witness, and even harder for...
Thank you very much for your comments. Sela Nissenbaum, to be followed by Robert Goodman.
This, the loss, the loss of life, including children, the violence and the destruction of homes and hospitals are hard to witness, and even harder for those who have family members in the region. The war has caused irreparable harm in Gaza. I pray for peace and want to see this end. Lastly, I must uphold the safety and cohesion of San Francisco. The antisemitism in our city is real and dangerous. My veto would send this issue back to the Board of Supervisors, in whom I have no confidence on this issue. It would likely lead to yet more divisive, harmful hearings, which in turn would keep this matter and divisiveness front and center in our city, and fan even more antisemitic acts. I cannot watch us divide ourselves even more. A leader like a doctor should be guided by the basic ethos to do no harm, to not make a bad situation worse. The Board of Supervisors have put us in the...
Thank you very much for your comments. Robert Goodman, and Robert Goodman is the last speaker card I have for the evening under public expression.
The Board of Supervisors has put us in this terrible position, and unfortunately, after much consideration and prayer, the best thing I can do is to try to quell it, turn down the volume, and begin the healing. I must choose unity. When we advocate for people thousands of miles away, we should still care for the people who are right here in San Francisco, people who are in pain and afraid. We are all San Franciscans. We don’t close people off, we open. So let us behave as we believe. Let us reject those that seek to divide us, and show, and show that life is sacred, that we are stronger, united, and that we all deserve to express ourselves without fear, ridicule, retribution, or division. I return this resolution without my signature. Signed, Mayor Breed.
Thank you very much, and that concludes our public comment. I appreciate everyone’s input tonight, and now we’ll move to council comments. And I’d like to invite council member Posekay to lead us off tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have tonight is several homeless coalition meetings emphasizing the fact that the PIT count is coming up, as we mentioned last, last meeting, this Friday, the 26th. It starts at 5:00 AM at the Mary Isaac Center. You can find details, volunteers are still needed. I assure you, you’ll be done by 9:00. And if you go, if you want further information, please Google Sonoma County Homeless Coalition. If you don’t see anything about the PIT count, which stands for Point in Time, P-I-T, Point in Time Count, if you don’t see that on the first page, but you see again Sonoma County Homeless Coalition, click on that again, and then you will see the PIT count page. At least, that’s my experience today. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you. Such an important metric, and knowing what the magnitude of the problem is, appreciate it. Council member Now.
Thank you. The parks are getting improved. If you didn’t see the front page of the Argus Courier, we have three parks online. For the gentleman that spoke on the pools, I don’t have time to tell you the update tonight, but we do have information. The Spring and Summer Recreation Guide is coming out very soon, like in the next month, because parents are already asking about summer camp. And the Better an Egg Day Parade is set for April 20th, so please put that on your calendar. They are looking for good egg nominations for the 2024 Good Egg. And think global, act local.
Thank you very much. Council member Healy.
Thank you. So I continue to prefer that the city not take up a resolution on the Middle East, and I’m, my thoughts are in, I’m very much in alignment with Mayor Breed of San Francisco. Couple of liaison reports, first from the water world, and I’m pleased to be joined by my esteemed former WAC chair from Rona Park, Mr. McKenzie, tonight. I’ve told the council in the past that Lake Sonoma’s water supply pool is full at 245,000 acre feet. They’ve stopped reporting a couple days ago. I think they were overwhelmed by the recent storms, but at last, last heard from, it was a little over 250,000 acre feet in storage, so it’s over 100%. So that’s really good news for the region for the coming year. And then, my policy committee with the League of California Cities, I’m on the Governance, Transparency, and Labor Relations Committee, considered possible amendments to SB 252 at our meeting last Thursday. SB 252 is the vehicle that would require calipers and calisters to divest of fossil fuel stocks, and their proposed amendments would make that optional to cities. So each city in our school district would to make, would get to make their own decision on whether they wanted a fossil-free caliper’s portfolio. It got a positive reception. It’s coming back to the next GTNLRC Committee meeting in March for a recommendation to the Board of Directors. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Barnacle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I’m going to make a statement because I didn’t really have the words last week. Thank you, everybody, for coming tonight. I would say, I similarly share a lot of what Mayor Breed said. The overwhelming majority of Israelis and Palestinians that I’ve talked to just want to live in peace. They want to watch their children grow up, go to work, celebrate birthdays, and enjoy basic freedoms and human rights. On October 7th, I was horrified by the grotesque terrorist acts carried out by Hamas, and since then, I’ve been similarly traumatized by the scale of civilian casualties and the destruction of critical infrastructure in Gaza. I’m not Jewish or Palestinian, but since October 7th, I’ve seen more hate directed at both groups than any other time in my life. And I can, I’m feeling the fear that your communities are feeling, even though not nearly as much. Yeah, I’m experiencing it way more than I ever have in my entire life. And I fully understand why community members are here in, in council chambers asking us to pass a ceasefire resolution and asking us not to, because it’s an incredibly fraught issue with a lot of history and baggage, and it’s incredibly challenging. And whereas other travesties are happening all over the world, American tax dollars are going to fund this war, and it’s, and our community is hurting. I’ve been reluctant to speak on this because I’m concerned about being perceived as being pro-Hamas or pro-war, and more importantly, making Israeli and Palestinian community members feel less safe in our community based on what I say. I want the war to end. I want hostages returned. I want humanitarian aid delivered to those who need it, and I want all three of these things to happen immediately, if not sooner. I think we all can share that. I hope we can. I trust we can. Voting in favor of a resolution does not make someone pro-Hamas just as much as voting against it doesn’t make them pro-war. That’s what uniting means. I’ve not been, I believe there is a statement to be made. I’ve not been an advocate that the council makes a statement, but given that the resolution is coming before us, it seems imminent, I’ve spent a considerable amount of time searching for words that I hope can unite us and not divide us, because in the end of this, voting for or against any sort of a resolution is choosing sides, and I, I hope that we can find words that do make us feel connected to a common cause of peace, peaceful coexistence for Israeli and Palestinian people, because both sides are hurting right now, and it’s really tough. I hope, I wish everybody peace.
Council member Kater Thompson.
Thank you. I am not in support of a resolution. I feel as though language is important, and I’m not, I don’t believe that we can come together with language that everybody is going to be happy with. I don’t believe that is the, why I ran for city council. I do watch world politics every single day. I look at what’s happening in Russia and Ukraine, and it’s, I’m glad the city put up lights, but there was no resolution. And there are... And I always feel whenever there's a war in the Middle East, it's always against, the Jews are always going to be blamed, and that's what happens every single time. I mean, that's just history. And I don't feel as though we need to bring that into these council chambers. Last week's meeting, or the week before, was extremely disruptive, up until 11 o'clock at night. For me, I feel as though people can have dialogue on this, but it is not the place and the council to divide this community anymore than it is being divided right now. So I'm hoping, since the resolution was polled, that it really doesn't come back, and that we just move on, and we do city business. But we can continue working on, you know, peace and working together as a community. So I think it is, I am the only Jewish person up here, so I feel it very different than everybody else. I hear what people say. I have watched the San Francisco, Oakland, Richmond city councils. I watched San Jose, and they were, they were as bad as our meeting was last week, except there were a lot more people there. And if somebody Jewish got up and spoke, they were just booed, and that was not happening on, you know, the other end. The discourse of last week and the disruption, and when I see people that I know walk into this chamber around 10:30 at night, goes and sits in the front row, takes the purse and drops it down just to make it loud, that's not what I'm here for, for that kind of disruption. And we have, how many police officers here? Let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. And they are here because people don't feel safe, and that costs a lot of money. And I don't feel as though this is, this is not why I ran for city council. I personally, as I said, watch politics and see what's going on in the world, but I don't need to bring it here and share mine through resolutions. And I'm just hoping that this doesn't happen. I'm hoping the Board of Supervisors, they're being pressured now, Santa Rosa's being pressured, and these are pressure that people are, elected officials are under. And I don't think that's fair to be put in that position. And I think there is a lot of history, but the one thing I do want to say is that when I hear that October 7th didn't happen, that is a real problem, and the viciousness that happened to women and children, just to be really clear, children were burnt alive in front of their parents. If you were in the military, your vagina was shot. And this was all on Hamas video. And it was horrible what happened, and that is, I do not want to support resolutions because we're really supporting Hamas. And when people say a ceasefire, what they're really saying is we want to have a ceasefire so Hamas can get stronger. And we have Iran, you know, feeding money into this. Now we have the Houthis. And one thing that I heard was, this is like the Vietnam War. Well, I went researching the Houthis and reading, and well, that's what they're saying too. So people really need to do a little bit of research and seeing where this information's coming from, and I don't believe that that's the purview of the city council.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate everybody's comments tonight. I, too, watch in horror what's going on, and continues to go on in Gaza, and I understand why folks would come to city council and want to have their voices heard. This is the fourth meeting where we've had this as a very public communication. People are raising this issue in the community, and I can see, sort of raises, rises from the horror and the frustration of not being solved immediately. But I also can appreciate Mayor London Breed's perspective. I think she put good words to trying to capture roles of city councils. And I very much appreciate Councilmember Barnicle's words, the key of which, peace. It is peace we need to consider, it is peace we need to chase for, and it is peace we should not rest until occurs. And it's a challenge, and I'm going to leave my comment at that point, and I'm going to move to one other comment I have on a different, whole different subject. Petaluma is hosting a gun violence prevention program at the end of this month. It's called Normalizing Safety Gun Violence Prevention, put together by the American Association of University Women. We're lucky to have two featured speakers, our two United States congressional representatives speaking at this, Mike Thompson and Jared Huffman, plus many others, our interim police chief and others. It's January 28th. I want everyone to know about this. It's 2:00 to 4:00, and it's at our Luke Hazy Community Center. I think when we talk about violence in the world, we need to remember issues at home as well. I hope people will take note of this. And I believe that closes council comments for the evening, and I'd like to move it over to our assistant city manager, who's subbing in tonight for our assistant, our city manager. Any comments from your end, Eric?
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. Just one, wanted to flag for the community that we are having the Kennelworth Park Redesign Project Community Meeting on Saturday, February 3rd. So that'll be from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and the team will be hosting a drop-in event, so you can come anytime during that three-hour period. We'll be showing off the latest updates on the preliminary park design concepts and seeking community feedback to help guide the final design. So snacks will be available, drinks, giveaways, and activities for kids will also be provided. And while we are optimistic that on February 3rd, there will be no rain, if there does happen to be rain, the event will be hosted indoors at the teen center, which is there at the Kennelworth Park. And for more information, you can go to cityofpetaluma.org/kennelworthpark for all the details. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move into our consent calendar for the evening. I do want to wish to note one item of change in the consent calendar here. We had previously announced a tentative agenda for two upcoming meetings, but the meeting of the 29th, it's a closed session, special closed session meeting, and we've postponed that meeting, so that's a minor change to the consent calendar. Does anyone on council have a comment on the consent calendar? And I'm going to ask for public expression here on the consent calendar, but that'll give us a moment to move if we want to, if our business with council tonight is complete.
And I had a question on one item, but it doesn't need to be taken off the agenda.
Then let's proceed with that question before public comment.
On item, item three, resolution authorizing the purchase of four battery electric buses, the staff reported, indicated that the buses will have a range of approximately 180 miles per charge, and I just wanted to know what, what a normal daily bus, how many miles a bus?
Yeah, I'm hoping Jared Hall, our transit manager, could answer that for us. Thank you.
Good evening, council. Could you repeat that question? It was about the range of 180 miles?
The staff report indicated that these buses have an effective range of 180 miles in one charge. I just wondered what a normal daily run is.
Next, Jared Hall, Transit Manager, by the way. So these buses, they estimate that they have 250 miles range is what they quote you, but based on kind of inefficiencies with energy loss for heat AC, we anticipate about 180 miles. Right now, our current piece is 200 to 210 miles per day, if the bus is running first thing in the morning all the way to the end of the day. So generally, we think it could do over 90% of our operational pieces right now. There is the chance that we would have to change the bus out once throughout the day if we put it out under the most extreme circumstances, but overall, we think it will be able to cover the vast majority of our service.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And public comment on this? May I ask the clerk if we've had any comments?
We did not receive any comments before the meeting.
Thank you so very much, and may I ask the moderator to read our messaging for this item?
Members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation. A countdown will appear for the convenience of the speaker and viewers.
And seeing no one rushing to the podium with a card hot in hand, I'd like to invite the one card whom I do have, Ben Peters, to come up and speak on this item.
Good evening, everyone. I am sorry to see the room so empty. I do think a discussion of the urban growth boundary is one thing that can unite our community, and I would hope we would have more engagement. Regarding the consent calendar item on the charging infrastructure and software, I am neutral on that. I do think the software is critically important to operate these vehicles. That gets short shrift in the staff report, and I would encourage the city council to provide direction to encourage the software that manages this critical infrastructure be heavily considered during the design and operation of this. It was mentioned that, you know, Councilmember Healy mentioned the question on the range of these vehicles and, you know, the large battery capacities and so forth. What isn't necessarily being contemplated, at least in the public, is what to do with these assets when they are not operational, and that's, you know, on holidays and things. And so these assets can provide significant benefits to the grid, particularly during peak times of 4:00 to 9:00 PM. And so the software to actually do that is critically important. The software being contemplated is from ChargePoint. If you drive an electric vehicle, you might have had some experience with ChargePoint. I will leave my experience aside, but I think you know where I'm coming from when we talk about ChargePoint software. And so hopefully, there is future discussion around how these important assets can actually be optimized for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seeing no other speakers, we close public comment on the consent calendar, bring it back to council for motion.
Happy to move the item.
Second. I missed the second, second by Barnicle. Thank you very much. And a roll call vote, please.
Aye.
Cader Thompson?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Posek?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you very much. That moves us into our public hearings and matters for consideration for the evening. Item seven, resolution accepting the fiscal year 2023 Annual Development Impact Fee Report, making a five-year finding pursuant to the Mitigation Fee Act. And I'd like to welcome Jesse Gooch, our newish finance director, to make this presentation. Welcome.
Thank you. So good evening, Mayor McDonald and city council members. State law requires that each local agency that imposes AB 1600 development impact fees prepare an annual report that provides specific information about those fees, and every five years to report on the remaining impact fee fund balances and planned capital projects. The report before you this evening is for the fiscal year ended June 30th of 2023, and we recommend this evening that the council conduct the public hearing and adopt the resolution accepting the fiscal 2023 AB 1600 report. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. Great report. I'd like to bring it back up to council to see if anyone has any particular questions for this report. And seeing none, I think I'll have comments, but when we bring it back to council with no particular questions. And at that, we will take it to public comment on this item, and I'd ask the clerk if we've had any prior comments.
We did not receive any public comments on this item.
Thank you very much, and I'd like our moderator to read public comment messaging.
Members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation. A countdown will appear for the convenience of the speaker and viewers.
And seeing no one heading either to the table or to the clerk's desk with a card, I will now close public comment on the matter and bring it back to council for any comments prior to motion. And just the one, I guess I had, is connecting us to the five-year CIP reiterates the need for the council to pay attention to the five-year CIP. We spend a lot of time in budget review talking about this year. What are we going to get done this year? But we have fund reserves, and we have a five-year plan. We need to make sure that we're achieving on a five-year basis, and that means no one year can fall behind because the next year would have to carry twice the load. And so just when we look at budget, we're not looking at only this year, we're looking at five year. I think that's a critical thing to remember and communicate to the public who expects completion of capital projects and betterment in the community. So I appreciate you bringing this item before us tonight. I know in past years, it's been consent calendar items, but with the five-year element, it's so important that it be heard as a public hearing. So thank you for your presentation. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Barnicle, second by Cader Thompson. May we have a roll call vote?
Barnicle?
Aye.
Cader Thompson?
Yes.
Healy?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Posek?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries 6-0.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your report. And now moving into the workshop, can I say main event? And tonight, we're receiving a presentation and providing feedback and direction regarding development of a measure to extend the Petaluma Urban Growth Boundary to be placed on the November 2024 ballot for voter approval. And helping us with this presentation tonight are Heather Hines, our special projects manager, and Brian O, our community development director. Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. So tonight, we're here to chat about the urban growth boundary, which is in place and set to expire at the end of 2025. So an opportunity to have a conversation about next steps and get council feedback to help guide our effort at the staff level. Bear with me a second here. I have the last of my ability to see my screen. There we go. Okay. So as background, Petaluma has a long history of local efforts to manage growth. This really initiated in the 1960s in response to sprawl development and failing infrastructure, and set forth a series of actions by the city to have a proactive approach to managing that growth, really culminated with the adoption, the voter approval of an urban growth boundary in 1998. At the time, this largely mirrored an urban limit line that had been in the 1987 general plan, and it created that physical boundary to combine growth and physical development. Initially, when the voters approved the UGB measure in 1998, it extended to 2018, so an initial... so an initial thirty years. That was then extended again by voters in 2010 to extend the expiration of the UGB to December 31st, 2025. And that was done to match the current general plan, which was adopted in 2008. When the UGB was adopted or approved by the voters in 1998, it included four expansion areas, which this is a figure from the general plan, and there's four expansion areas that are shown in a hatched line on that graphic. And those are, as was approved in 1998, we have had no annexation of those expansion areas since that time, and so those remain in place. I do want to note that this graphic, which is from our general plan and which was included the sphere of influence, which is the dark shaded areas. At the time, we spoke with our colleagues with LAFCO, and there have been some changes to the sphere of influence, the boundary of the sphere of influence that may be different than what is shown in this graphic. So, we will be looking at bringing those together as well as part of any future effort. So, I just want to acknowledge that there might be a difference between what is in the current general plan and which is in, has been adopted by LAFCO. Another thing that the ballot measure approved were four exceptions, and these are adopted into our current general plan, policy 1P 32. And these four exceptions provide for an allowance to amend the UGB by the city council without voter approval. So, these cover the need for provision of housing for all economic segments of the community to avoid a constitutional taking that may arise due to the UGB boundary. Exception three is for transit-oriented development near transit station, although this one does limit to 1,500-foot radius from a rail station, and we'll be talking more about that later in this report. It also allows for amendment to the UGB for office or industrial uses to improve local employment. And then finally, the fourth exception is for agricultural or agricultural support uses. Three out of four of these require a six-sevenths vote by the council and in more detail under the ballot measure as well as the general plan policies or specific findings and more nuance. And that was included as an attachment to your staff report. To date, there has not been, similarly to no, UGB expansion. There has not been any approval of any of these exceptions since they were originally adopted. The objectives, and this is a little bit of a summary, but they are in their full form in the staff report. The objectives from the original measure I for the adoption of the UGB in 1998 are still very relevant to much of our conversations that we have in the community today in terms of encouraging efficient growth patterns, protecting Petaluma's natural setting, concentrating growth to minimize impacts on services and allow the city to continue to meet housing needs. So, this is really, shows the continued support for something like the UGB and continuing to extend the expiration of the UGB so it remains in place. So, there is a recommendation in your staff report that staff has put forward, and this is really, it's based on considerations related to time and budget, also based on considerations such as the general plan update process, the current status of the construction of the Petaluma North Station, recent grant awards we've received, as well as public input that has come in during the general plan update. So, the recommendation that staff has put forward is a recommendation that the council direct staff to prepare a measure for the November 2024 ballot to extend the UGB, including no change to the existing UGB boundaries or expansion areas, to extend the expiration of the UGB to 2050, and to modify general plan policy 1P 32 to modify exception three to allow expansion of approximately half-mile radius from a rail transit station for TOD. And I'm going to go into some of the specifics that informed this recommendation for your consideration. So, we are in the process of a comprehensive general plan update. We had originally thought the UGB extension would sync up with the general plan update, although we've made some big strides with our general plan update process in terms of a certified housing element, flood and sea level rise modeling, the draft blueprint for carbon neutrality. The timing is now anticipated to be adopted, the general plan to be adopted in summer of 2025. And so, really feeling like that pushes the timing for an extension of the current UGB, which expires December 31st of 2025, pushes it too far out. Another component of the general plan update that has informed the recommendation is during community outreach, during the visioning stage, there was community input that indicated a potential support for UGB expansion for the area at the corner of Corona and the Smart Rail to facilitate TOD, transit-oriented development near that new station. There was really minimal interest in any of the other UGB expansion areas and actually opposition to expressed by both GPAC and members of the community. So, those current recommendations to keep the existing UGB boundaries with focus on potential in the area around the Petaluma North Station was really focused on that input we've received. I wanted to touch on our housing element. During the sixth cycle, our regional housing needs allocation was 1,910 units. We do have a certified housing element that does include opportunity sites, housing inventory sites that demonstrate Petaluma's capacity to accommodate that full housing needs allocation and that we were able to demonstrate that capacity to accommodate the arena within city limits. So, I just kind of wanted to touch on that point because we are not depending on any annexation in order to meet our housing allocation needs for this next eight-year cycle. A few years ago, we adopted a priority development area, and this is a priority development area or PDA is an infill area that's close to existing transit infrastructure, and it's really seen as being optimal to bring transit, jobs, housing together as part of our regional growth framework. So, in anticipation of the North Petaluma North Station, the city submitted to Metropolitan Transit Commission, MTC, Transportation Commission, submitted an application to establish a new PDA around the Corona Station, and that was designated, and this shows an outline of that PDA. You will notice that it does include much of that UGB expansion area at the corner of Corona and the Smart Rail tracks. So, that PDA was really adopted in anticipation of the build-out of the station and is a vital part of the evolution of this area in Petaluma to be considered. Petaluma North Station two in November of 2023, it was the groundbreaking event on the site. Construction to begin this month, if it hasn't already, and anticipated to complete construction later this year. So, again, this is an essential component to creating that transit-oriented development hub along with the station, to support the station, to support increased density around that transportation, that transit infrastructure. So, again, annexation or the possibility of annexing that UGB expansion area adjacent to the station is an important aspect to really create true TOD around the station. It's consistent with that 1998 UGB expansion area, and it really appears to be, of the four UGB expansion areas, it seems to be the most timely and supported by the community. Along with that, last year, Petaluma was awarded $1.15 million from MTC to develop a specific plan for that Corona priority development area. So, this is a great opportunity for focused community engagement, visioning for that area around the Smart Station, recognizing with the added station there that we really have just an amazing opportunity to vision that area and that that would be an important time to consider expansion of the UGB in that area. It ensures that when potential annexation is considered, it's part of that clear community vision for how development will occur in that area. It's also consistent with general plan policy 1P 39, which says, "Specific or master plans for major annexations beyond the 1998 UGB to ensure orderly development as well as financing for necessary infrastructure and services." So, again, we're recommending that that UGB expansion not be included as part of the ballot measure, but rather keeping the boundaries as they are and letting that expansion area be considered as part of an exception concurrent with the adoption of a specific plan in that area. So, as mentioned, we are recommending consideration of a modification to one of the exceptions, and that's exception three. And that exception provides flexibility to approve an expansion of the UGB without voter approval with a six-sevenths vote of the city council. But there are four transit-oriented development near a rail station. However, the exception includes a limitation to a 1,500-foot radius from the station. So, that inner red line that you see there is the 1,500 feet. So, we are recommending that a surgical modification to that exception be made to change that 1,500-foot radius to a half-mile radius, which is more in keeping with station planning that we typically do, and that's that second line. We also really emphasizing the approximately because you can see that the lines go right through properties. So, obviously, you're not going to annex the rear part of the property and leave the front part in the county. So, that approximately would allow us to jog that line a little bit to account for those variations. This would provide flexibility to consider annexation as part of the specific planning process, maximize benefits of planning for TOD development within that half-mile of the new station. And this just gives another look at that area and really looks at the difference between that 1,500-foot radius from the station and the half-mile, which is closer to 2,640 feet. So, a couple other considerations I wanted to touch on. Our existing general plan, the maximum density outside of our core downtown, under the SMART code, our maximum density is 30 units to the acre. So, if there was an expansion of the UGB boundaries that happened now, that would be the maximum density that we could designate the area, and that may not be adequate to facilitate the intensity of TOD that the community might like to see around the station area. So, wanting to make sure that we have in place the land use designations and controls to make sure we get the kind of development we want to see to maximize the opportunity around the station. Our grant funding from MTC for the specific plan does have a minimum density requirement of 25 units an acre, and this is minimum, not maximum, but, and that's part of their transit-oriented communities policy. So, again, really the desire to make sure that those types of provisions, so when that property might be annexed in the future, we get the desired development that we want around the station. So, we are not recommending any changes to the, both the UGB boundaries as part of any future ballot measure, but also the expansion areas. We are recommending extending the UGB to 2050, which is slightly longer, but really looking to pair that up with the adoption of our new general plan in 2025, a 20-year anticipated planning horizon for that document, and then five years to allow that subsequent general plan adoption and UGB to be tracking concurrently. And then finally, financial implications on the timing of the ballot measure, and this is outlined in the staff report, but it is significantly less expensive for the ballot measure to be placed on a regular election ballot as opposed to a special election. So, our clerk looked into the differences, and there's some variation because it depends on a lot of factors, but there could be a considerable difference if we did not make the 2024 election. So, public outreach, there has been, the discussion of the UGB expiration has been attracting attention among community members, and we've gotten a lot of feedback on making sure that we do not allow the UGB to expire. Staff did meet with representatives from Green Belt Alliance to discuss city approach and anticipated timeline. So, we anticipate continuing to work collaboratively with them on outreach as we get direction and move forward. And staff was also recently approached by property owners of the expansion area located at the south of town, Freitas and Lakeville, about potential annexation and talked to them about the fact that we are not recommending any changes in the boundaries, so they would remain an expansion area and have the exception should they want to submit consideration of a project that involved an expansion, that no changes were being proposed that would impact them in that way. From environmental review perspective, there is no action this evening. We're looking for feedback and direction, but no action. So, given there's no action, tonight is not a project under the California Environmental Quality Act. Obviously, when we bring the item back for council action to place the item on the ballot, it will be a project, we will include appropriate environmental analysis for the city council to consider. And the extent of that analysis largely depends on feedback and the scope of any final ballot measure, the scope of the final ballot measure. In terms of alternatives, staff's recommendation was based on a lot of factors, really looking at timeline and budget constraints. So, just, there are alternatives that the council may wish to consider, and just want to emphasize that changes to the scope of the ballot may have unintended impacts to the level of environmental review, timeline, and budget. And as expressed, staff has concerns with pushing to a special election in 2025, given the expiration of the UGB and wanting to make sure that we do not allow that to lapse. So, with that, just a recap on what is being recommended by staff for feedback from the council. Recommendation from staff is that we place the measure to extend the UGB on the November 2024 ballot with no changes to the existing boundaries or expansion areas, extend to 2050, and that modification recommended for exception three to allow a greater expansion for transit-oriented development to a half-mile radius from a rail transit station. for transit-oriented development to a half-mile radius from a rail transit station. And that concludes my report. We're both here for any questions.
Wonderful, great report. I'd like to invite the council to make comments and questions at this point, and then we'll take it to public comment after the questioning. Councilmember Barnacle.
Thank you. Appreciate the report. I certainly understand the rationale around the Corona station. For the other three, especially the one on Lakeville where, you know, that's one of, I mean, really, the other three expansion areas, they just seem like they would just be considering, you know, continuing with a sprawl paradigm. Why wouldn't we just only have the Corona station expansion area included in this UGB
I mean, that, that is an option. Leaving the other three in is just allowing for flexibility for consideration over the next 30 years if, if the need arose and continuing with the, what's been on the books since
Councilmember Kater Thompson.
Well, tomorrow night's planning commission meeting, we're going to be discussing Cornerstone, which is at the north end of town. So it's kind of odd having that tomorrow night when we're talking about the UGB and where we want to go with it, and yet they're moving forward, you know, requesting sewer and water hookups and other things, especially since the flood mapping isn't completed. So...
Yeah, so that property is in the UGB. So they have had that application in and are requesting annexation consistent with our existing...
So all four of these areas that can be annexed, that could happen with Lakeville or on Freitas. Is that correct?
Yes, but it's a much different findings process and a requirement for a six-sevenths vote of the council. So it would have to be for one of the reasons, one of the expansions or exceptions that are in the general plan, specific findings would have to be made, and then a six-sevenths vote to approve it at the city council level. So there's a more stringent review of those urban UGB expansion areas as opposed to something that is currently in.
So that's, so Cornerstone will be coming before the city council and will need a six-seventh vote?
No, because it is currently within the UGB. It's not an expansion area. It's the last parcel before, between, last parcel between city, current city limits and the current UGB. So it is within the UGB.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Well, is, but why on the map is it showing an expansion area? It's because it's showing the slates, the slats, you know, on the, if you look at the map, it looks the same as the other three.
I will try to, if we can, I'll hand the mic over to Brian and take other questions, and I'll try to bring up a better map to show, demonstrate that.
Thank you.
So along a somewhat similar vein, I'll start with the expansion area on, on the west side of, or the east side of 101 at the north end of town. I, I thought that property had some pretty profound floodplain issues. If, if you could check that before you come back, and I don't know if it's realistic to continue to count that one as, as something that's ever going to happen. My, my bigger questions are around how we're going to demonstrate that there's enough land within the existing urban growth boundary to accommodate three rena cycles worth of housing, because we just got a certified housing element for an eight-year rena cycle, but this is supposed to go out to 2050. And we had to get pretty creative to, to get a certified housing element this time. So I, what I'm expecting to see from staff when this comes back is how we can demonstrate to the community and HCD and the world that, yes, indeed, we have enough land within what we're proposing to make our urban growth boundary, to, to say that, yes, we can still accommodate arena needs. And, and those are unknown, obviously, but we can, I guess they're probably not, not going to get any lighter going forward. So I, I would imagine we would see that in May with the publication of the draft mitigated negative declaration. Would that be fair?
So when we, I believe we are scheduled to come back in early summer, late spring, and so that, at that point, depending on how the discussion goes this evening, we would prepare more in-depth environmental analysis. That is one potential outcome.
I'm looking at page three of the staff report, and it says, "May 17th, publish initial study slash mitigated negative declaration if necessary."
Yeah, and just, that is the plan, just per staff recommendation. Again, if there is a more detailed discussion tonight to broaden the scope, that's just something we wanted to, to flag for the council.
Okay, I appreciate that. That, that's the biggest question in my mind, because I know the community supports this. I think we all support this, want to make it happen, but we just have to make sure we're doing it right. Thank you.
Councilmember Posak.
Thanks. I have a question about the qualifying, for example, for the transit-oriented development, and, and does the, does the area you're proposing to develop under, you know, TOD type of law, does it just have to be 1% within a half a mile, or does it have to be 100%, or does it have to be 52.7%?
Great question. So that's where, as my colleague Heather pointed out, we wanted to have an approximate, just because as you saw, the parcels aren't neatly fit into the radius there. Just the industry standard is a half-mile radius, so that's typically what people are comfortable walking and biking from a station. And so that's typically, I mean, you see that with our downtown station planning. It's sort of this international model, and so that's where the half-mile comes from. But again, we want it to make it approximate, just given some of the different parcels and how that's laid out. But in general, I think most people are willing to, or see something that's transit-oriented as within a half-mile distance.
But, you know, but does the overlap there make it harder to get any state approvals that are required or anything, I guess is what I was asking? Where that, where those lots, where the, the colored, different colored area of the, of the annexation, if you will, you know, it goes beyond a half, half a mile. And I'm wondering, is that ever an issue? You know, does it have to be all within the half-mile?
So that's where, again, wording matters, right? So if we say, "Shall not go beyond the half-mile," then I could see that being a potential issue, because we're proposing it to be approximate. I believe there's a little latitude to include, so let's say you have half of a parcel that is just within the 2,600 feet from the station, the intent would be to include that entire parcel.
Okay, yeah, I see. Okay.
Councilmember Now.
Well, the really important thing is we don't want it to lapse. So if we do these little nuanced changes, do we have to do a sequel process that would, would delay getting it ready for the ballot, which we want to avoid?
Yes. So we definitely want to avoid that, and so what the staff is recommending this evening is a proposal to retain the existing boundary, create the exceptions that are in the existing policy and the voter initiative, and add the expansion of the exception. And so all of that, we feel we can, we can complete and get this on the ballot in time for the November 2024 election.
And that includes just how it's on the map tonight?
Correct.
Okay. I'm, I'm good with that. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm sorry, could I ask for clarification? Are, are you saying if we do accept that expansion area Corona, it, it's a negative deck, or what, what, what level of sequel would be required?
We're still looking at that, but we may be able to do an exemption if we are keeping the boundaries where they are, no change to the current boundaries. And then as more focused planning as part of that specific plan, where we're actually looking at what, what the land use designation would be at that, that level, it could be folded into the, whatever the environmental would be for that specific plan.
Thank you. Let me express my enthusiasm in the form of a question. It seems the schedule is determined on the ballot measure timeline. Is there a reason we can't accelerate the schedule and, you know, maybe not back it up from the, from the measure timelines, but from today, what would it take to get us tomorrow approving this?
Right, and we were just making sure that, like, those drop dead in terms of looking backwards, but depending on the feedback that comes, comes out of tonight's meeting, we may be able to move that up and, and be back further, so we're not up against those deadlines.
Yeah, we'd love to have council express their desire to have the meeting dates accelerated if they so concurred. So we have a study for TOD for the Corona area. Does the TOD allow for or require us to have mixed use? I mean, I think we'll be talking mixed use there. Is that all part and parcel to that study's abilities to say that we'll have a mixed use? Is transit oriented, residential only, or, yeah?
Yeah, so the intent would be, you know, not just residential for commuters to utilize the station, but also the opposite, right? People wanting to work, that can come from out of the city, around the station, and go to their place of work.
And if we recommend having TOD in that area, at what point do we do the zoning of that area that, the higher density is, how does that nexus occur?
We do not do land use designations outside of our UGB. So you'll notice that on the, on the land use map. If it's inside our UGB, there's a land use designation, but there's not zoning assigned. The zoning then gets assigned, you pre-zone when you have an application for annexation. So what, what we would be looking at is through that specific plan process, deciding on what, what level of density and intensity is desired in that area, and any kind of potential expansion and/or land use designation and zoning happening as part of that.
So does the zoning specific plan have to happen before we can be on the ballot, or we can be on the ballot without a zoning?
We can be on the ballot because we're not, we're not recommending, if, as staff is recommending, there's no change to the boundaries. So it doesn't, it doesn't change as part of the ballot measure. When it would change is when we have all those things in place through the specific plan, and there's an effort to extend the UGB once all those provisions are in place.
So at this time, can you, is there a, a plan, a concept for things like traffic for this added area? I see one of the parcels hits Eli. Would it complicate matters that it hits Eli? That, would we have traffic patterns that reach outside of city limits? Is that part of this conversation, or is that specific plan level stuff?
Yeah, so primarily, it would fall with the specific plan. I think that's what we're really fortunate in having is, you know, we have the general plan, we can look at it to an extent, and then, so I believe we will touch on it during the discussion of the general plan update, and then have a much more focused discussion around the impacts through the environmental analysis, focus on this, the north end of town.
One other question that arose in the presentation was, changes in sphere of influence? Is our sphere of influence getting larger or smaller?
So the current, great question. The current sphere of influence that is with LAFCO is coterminous with our UGB, so it's, it's smaller than what was presented earlier, and it just lines up part and parcel with our urban growth boundary.
Got it. Thanks. Any other questions, council? I guess, Councilmember Kater Thompson.
I just want to talk about, thank you, the half a mile versus the other 1,500. So are we looking at, are we talking about expanding a half a mile? If we do, doesn't that change the, for environmental impact report?
What we're look, what we're recommending to do is just to change the wording in exception three to allow consideration in the future of a half a mile radius, up to a half mile radius, instead of the limitation to the 1,500-foot radius. But we're not actually...
Including it.
Changing anything. We're just changing the...
Just the language to...
Allow you to consider that in the future.
Okay, so we're, so what's existing, that is what's going to be in the general plan, except the language that we could allow.
Except for that one change to exception three. Yeah, but no change in the boundaries is, is proposed.
Okay, thank you.
And then this map is the general plan map, and I just wanted to, this is the parcel, you can see my cursor, that is the parcel that you're referring to. I think it's 5,400 old red. And this is the existing city limit line, and this is the existing UGB. So this parcel is the last parcel before the UGB, but it is within the UGB, and that's the difference between, it is not an expansion area because it's already included in our
Councilmember Healy.
So just to follow up on that, I, I guess my concern with using the word approximately is it introduces ambiguity in an area where we don't really want ambiguity. And I'm looking at this map that you thoughtfully prepared, and I, I don't want to wordsmith now because we don't need to at this point, but maybe the thought would be that it would be a 1,500-foot radius, but also including the remainder of parcels, the majority of which are, are included within the 1,500-foot radius, or the 20-half-mile radius, I'm sorry, something like that.
Thank you.
And with that, I'd like to take it to public comment, and I'd like to invite our clerk to let us know whether we've had online comment prior to tonight's meeting.
We did. We had one comment, and it's posted online in our agenda.
Thank you very much, and I'd like our moderator to read our messaging for this item.
Members of the public attending in person should bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation. A countdown will appear for the convenience of the speaker and viewers.
And that's our 30 seconds, I guess, right there. Good. I don't see anyone else rushing to the counter with cards, and I have seven or eight cards present. I'd like to invite Nicola Frye to speak first, followed by Blake Hooper.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is really short. Having worked with Helen Putnam on the original boundary and gone through the entire process of getting it on the ballot and listening to everybody's comments and everything, I am thrilled that you're going to put it on the ballot to keep it.
Well, thank you very much, Blake Hooper, to be followed by Jake McKenzie.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. I will also try to keep this short. I just came to say how grateful I was that you're considering keeping the current urban growth boundary. I just wanted to note that the half-mile change falls very well within recent state law. I also wanted to note that the 2024 schedule is perfect for voter turnout, which would be even better for showing strong community support for the measure. And at a time when the last few meetings, we've talked a lot about Petaluma's history and culture, this really does epitomize Petaluma's focus on protecting our natural agriculture, our, our natural open space, and really creating that sense of place that we all care about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jake McKenzie, to be... Jake McKenzie to be followed by Callum Weeks.
Mr. Mayor, council members, I'm Jake McKenzie. I'm here in front of you tonight, not as a recovering politician, but as a member of the Green Belt Alliance Board of Directors. Not only that, I have history in Petaluma, too. My late ex-wife Donna McKenzie was on the first committee of the 500 unit battles that were on the east side and the west side from that historic growth management ordinance that the city of Petaluma found itself arguing all the way to the Supreme Court. So and with also the background that in 1993, my wife and I were founding members of Green Belt Alliance's Urban Growth Boundary Campaign. We are the only county where all nine jurisdictions have urban growth boundaries and we're joined by the county in that. And an interesting thing happened in Ronert Park once the urban growth boundary was in place, the 20 year urban growth boundary in the year 2000. Sonoma State University purchased property on Petaluma Hill Road. They then came to the city of Ronert Park asking that they be connected with our potable water and wastewater systems. It was their land that they purchased without talking to us was outside the urban growth boundary. And our answer was very clear, no, we will not provide services outside that urban growth boundary. They then went to the city of Santa Rosa and they said, yeah, if you build a 10 mile trunk line all the way to our subregional plant, we will be delighted to supply you with wastewater treatment. So it's a real thing, the urban growth boundary, and you do have that long history. I've listened to the discussions obviously tonight, Councilmember Healy and I, back in the days of smart negotiations on that very site. So I'm somewhat familiar with that and I was pleased to see your consideration of TOD and I was chair of MTC involved with PDA activities. So this has been an interesting wallow in nostalgia for me this evening. That brings me to my statement that you have in your staff report clearly stated that Green Belt Alliance staff have been working with your staff and that you intended to continue that dialogue. Did I read the staff report correctly? I believe I did. And so we certainly welcome that and we support the staff recommendation that was made in front of you. And Landry Area 2050 speaks to maintaining urban growth boundaries throughout those nine county regions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Callum Weeks to be followed by Teri Shore.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members and staff. My name is Callum Weeks. I'm the policy director with Generation Housing. I would just like to first plus one everyone that came before me. I think it's pretty much a shared interest among all residents of Sonoma County that we maintain our urban growth boundaries and that we increase and really focus on higher intensity in our downtown arterial routes here in the city and throughout Sonoma County. And so with that, I'll keep it short and brief and to the point, I would just like to add our voice to supporting the staff's recommendation. And thank you so much, staff, for continuing your work. I'm really, really grateful and I'm absolutely thrilled to hear you guys are going above and beyond MTC TOC's requirements for density units per acre. So it's wonderful to see and yeah, have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. Teri Shore to be followed by Dwayne Bellinger.
Yes, hi, good evening. I'm Mayor McDonald, city council members, staff and members of the public. My name is Teri Shore and I am representing the Sierra Club Redwood Chapter Sonoma Group. Wow, it's been a long time I've been up here. It's a totally different world since the long time, last time I was here speaking at a public comment. So thank you all for being here and your leadership through these kind of tumultuous years that we've had. So Sierra Club urges the renewal of the existing urban growth boundary with a vote of the people, with a ballot measure put on by the city council on the November 2024 ballot. As we all know, the urban growth boundary is a very important land use tool that ensures that we have a climate-friendly, wildfire-safe, diverse and affordable community. The staff report does highlight existing and possible new expansion areas that could occur without a vote of the people. Overall, I think it's okay, but right now we can't really, Sierra Club can't take a position until we see the final ballot measure language. But in general, I think we probably will be in support. We have to officially vote on that. I did have a couple of questions that you can answer now or in the future if and when you do move with the expansion areas. Would you need to do CEQA? So if the vote, you know, 6/7th of the city council votes for one of these areas, would you need to do CEQA? Would you have to go to LAFCO and get their approval? Would there be any consideration of the community separators that are not bumping up to, but fairly close? Because I think there is some county policy language about impacts on community separators. And regarding RENA, the existing ballot measure does allow the city council to expand areas to meet state housing law, up to five acres, I think it is right now. So that's when, something in the existing measure that might address Councilmember Healy's concerns. So I will end by saying the Sierra Club is prioritizing the renewal of the urban growth boundary and working with the city council and hoping to get it passed at the right time. So thank you.
Thank you. Dwayne Bellinger to be followed by Ben Peters.
Yes, good evening. First of all, thank you, the the urban growth boundary has done what I had hoped it would do and that is prevent two-car suburbia from growing up around the Corona Station. I anticipated the Corona Station of the North Station since 1989 here in Calthorpe suggested. I would point out, taking us back a little nostalgia, not quite back as Jake McKenzie, but I would take us back to the Corona Eli Plan. And that was basically, if I recall, of six developers wanting to build 350 acres in the north end. And if you recall, the, the, what the, the Sustainable Assessment Team called it the north east corner there, a little gem. And looking back as to how that was done, I would make, I would make a suggestion that it was, it was taken in as a unit so that they could lean on all six developers to put in the two schools, to the developers to provide the land for the shopping center that's there, for the two parks that are there, for the playing fields that are there, and for the change of the orientation of Eli to go over to deliver people to the train station. All of that was done because they were brought in as a unit. And I would ask that when you go to either plan it or annex it, the Corona Eli area now, that you think about that as what you can do for leverage to guarantee that it actually be built into a pedestrian-oriented community. That you want the plan in place and you don't want it piecemeal brought in as just a hodgepodge. And that's what I would ask you to do. Thank you.
Thank you. The last speaker I have a card for tonight is Ben Peters.
Thank you, everyone. I'd like to focus my comments specific to the long view of what's going to happen to Pen Grove. It's a little interesting, the sphere of influence comment. It looks like our sphere of influence extends into Pen Grove, although our UGB boundary cuts that short. So I don't quite know the sphere of influence comment as it extends to Pen Grove. I do think we should be aware of what could happen between now and 2050. The first domino that Councilmember Kater Thompson mentioned was the annexation. The second domino is Reed's trailer. My understanding is that parcel is currently in the county's approved housing element for development. So that's two dominos already in the plan. And so even within exception one for affordable housing, it doesn't take that many parcels to get us into Pen Grove. And so is that, maybe that is what we want, maybe that is not what we want. But I do think we should be clear about that in our thinking. You know, the, the, the way the county housing element was done was that, you know, we have the Reed's trailer and then we have the Bodega Avenue parcels for our area. The Ronert Park area, all of the development for Ronert Park and Katati was in Pen Grove. There is going to be a lot of potential building in Pen Grove. And it's already pretty dense when you get to the, whatever that bar is over there, right? And, you know, with the current housing laws and lot splits or whatever, now you only have a couple parcels between us and Pen Grove that are still greenbelt. And so I don't know if we could do something with the exceptions or under no circumstances shall the urban growth boundary extend past Eli or, you know, I don't know how creative we want to get with the language, but just based on what I'm seeing happening in Pen Grove with the county and the immense pressure on the county's RENA numbers, that's exactly what they want to do is build in Pen Grove. And hey, you know, maybe, you know, Pen Grove becomes Petaluma and that's what this community wants and maybe that's okay and we leave it up to the people between now and them to talk about that. But that is the one area that we should really be thinking about in terms of development and if we want that, if we don't want that, or how exactly we want that process to play out. Because again, we're talking about two dominos already stacked up between now and Pen Grove. And, you know, that Reed's trailer, that's a big parcel. That'll take you, you know, right there to the Palace of Fruit. And, you know, people like that the Palace of Fruit is rural and it's not going to be rural much longer. So thank you.
Thank you. And that closes public comment for the evening. And while bringing it up to council for comments, I think I'd like to ask staff to maybe make a comment about how city and county work together, RENA numbers, housing elements, and the kind of pressure the county has and might want to apply on city.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of the community to this evening, just providing public feedback. So, you know, we won't be planning in a vacuum. You know, typically when we would embark on the specific plan effort, general plan effort, as we start to have more detailed discussion, particularly in that area, we would want to be engaging with our county counterparts and so ensuring not only coordination with the county planning agency, but also our local formation organization, so LAFCO. And so we've started that conversation with them and will continue to have those conversations throughout this process.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Bring it back up to council, Councilmember Healy.
Sure, just a few things shortly. With regard to Pen Grove, I think the main reason that they're in our area of influence is because we provide sewer service to central Pen Grove. And I don't think anyone in Petaluma wants to annex Pen Grove and I'm sure that, I'm sure they, sure that considered, that thought. So that's, that's why that exists. Don't read anything more into it than that. Secondly, I do support moving forward with an urban growth boundary expansion. I think it may be somewhat less important than it was in the past because even if some of these parcels outside of our urban growth boundary were available for annexation, they still couldn't be developed as subdivisions because of our VMT policies. And I think most people don't recognize that. The one exception to that is the expansion area by the rail station we've been talking about tonight. That scores very well under VMT. Everything else, we have actually land inside the urban growth boundary that can't be developed because of VMT. So, you know, that's, that's part of our challenge for creating housing going forward. And so I look forward to seeing the analysis on how, how we're going to make three RENA cycles worth of housing inside our existing urban growth boundary with the VMT constraint. And I wanted to tell the story. Back when the, the now expiring general plan was being presented by Pamela Tough, who was the general plan lead staff person early in the process, probably around 2004, and Karen, you might have been here, Pamela came and said, okay, here's, here's what it looks like. And then the urban growth of boundary expires at the end of 2018 and January 1, 2019 is going to be the Oklahoma land rush. She didn't use those words. Bet we're going to push out here, we're going to push out there, we're going to push out everywhere. And the council unanimously said, yeah, no, we don't want that. And so that's why the current general plan continued the existing urban growth boundary and why the council put the ballot measure on in 2010 to extend it to 2025. So there's a huge consensus in this town to not push out past where we are now. The other thing in your historical timeframe, timeline at the beginning that is missing that kind of the political earthquake that made all this happen was the Freyde's Ranch referendum in 1982, Janice is agreeing. And, and that was a massive development in the southeast quadrant, approved by the city council at the time, and then petitions were circulated, the signatures were gathered and the community said, yeah, no. So that's, that really was kind of the impetus to a lot of this. And the community feels the same way today. Thank you.
Thank you. And I just want to bounce off staff. So you're looking for specific feedback from this workshop regarding the extension, extension of time, the extension of a particular area? And any other, do you want to tee up the staff, the council for where you want support and input?
So just for clarity, because it also came up as part of a public comment, staff's recommendation is not to change the boundaries of the UGB and not to change, not create any new expansion areas to keep the boundaries and the four exception areas as they are. So that's one thing we're looking for, council, is that, is there support for that? Is there support for the 2050 as a, as an extension, a time extension? And is there support for making that modification to exception three to allow a larger radius around the station to meet the half mile radius kind of standard that we use for station planning these days? So those are the three things that we're looking for feedback and if there's anything else that the council wants to direct, but that's, we're looking for feedback on that so we can move forward.
Great, thanks. Councilmember Barnacle.
So I definitely support renewing the UGB without changing the current boundary. I support extending it to 2050. I also think that we should remove the three expansion areas that would amount to about 300 acres of sprawl, especially if we're going to be expanding the area around the Corona, the potential annexation area around Corona Station. Because I think what I really like, there was a really great article in the Atlantic just a couple of days ago about, it was titled, "The Culture War Tearing American Environmentalism Apart." And it's basically about people who want density in walkable communities and people who are more traditional environmentalists. It's a really great read. But I think that this campaign is, this is where we're at and we're bumping up against this with things like the overlay, our general plan update. And I really hope the campaign for this is not just a campaign to protect open space, but it's also a campaign in favor of walkable communities, TOD and field development, and really a vision for what our city is going to look like in 2050. Because if the next 25 years of growth looks like the last 70, Councilmember Healy's right, we're going to have a lot of problems meeting our housing goals and being a community where working families can live. So, you know, I would, my one concern with the expansion areas is the, the sort of islands that are created on, on Eli Road. And what I don't want to see there is great class four Road. And what I don't want to see there is great Class IV bike lanes along Eli Road that just wind up not being continued because those are county parcels, and it's not the county's problem. And so, can you talk a little bit about how we would go about ensuring that the experience, if we were to extend on Corona Road or at the Corona Station area there, how would we ensure that, you know, it's not sort of like A Tale of Two Cities on Eli Road with those parcels that are islanded there?
Councilman, just to clarify, you're asking about Corona, so bike infrastructure on Corona going eastbound, connecting potentially Eli?
If you look on the parcel map, it is, let's see here, this is, it's one of the two attachments that are on there. Corona, I think it's attachment three. Yeah, attachment three. So, those islanded, the parcels that kind of like, but that would be still county parcels, but are, you see what I mean there, on Eli? I imagine that we would have access in the, on the ones that are on the purple on Eli Road.
Correct. So, again, this is where coordination with our county counterparts come in. I mean, you know, I don't, I don't think anyone wants to put forth a plan or development that just, you know, would potentially dump somebody from a protected bike lane into something that's not, and a change in condition. So, that's something, you know, we could look into as a policy, as part of the specific plan. And so, that's, I mean, off the top of my head, that's sort of, for starters, where we would go.
Well, then, given that response, I appreciate that. I think that I would support removing the other three expansion areas. We've already, I was just looking back, and there's a letter from one of the landowners on Lakeville that, you know, there's July 2021, September 2022, May 2023, all asking for us to annex that property in. And I just think that's a ticking time bomb. And if we're going to be expanding the potential expansion area around Corona Station, I'd like to use this opportunity to make a clear statement that we're not going to be, no more sprawl in Petaluma. This is what being, you know, being carbon, trying to get to carbon neutral building the right way means. So, I don't know whether the other councilmembers feel that way, but I hope so.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Kater Thompson?
I actually would agree with Councilmember Barnicle, especially if we're extending the area by the Corona Station. Because the one on Freites Road is just, you know, VMT, and the one on Lakeville is access issues. I mean, so there's some, I think, real problems with both of those properties, where the Corona Station kind of fits every which way as far as reduces VMT, and then you have expansion in that area to take us to 2050. And it would eliminate future proposals coming through, kind of like the one up north, which, you know, to me is a real problem, the one up north, considering I've been following that property for 30 years, and there is definitely water issues there. And so, you know, you're kind of being forced to support something. And I think we don't really want to be forced into supporting projects, and that's what will happen. So, I would agree with that, to remove those two. It's not, it's two probably, two, not three, correct? Because on the map that I'm looking at up here, it's showing the property we're looking at, that, so are there four expansion areas? And where is the one up north, past Corona?
There is one on the opposite side from the 5400, the opposite side of Old Red, behind other parcels that have already been developed.
Oh, Baker Street or something back in that direction?
Yeah. It's, is it Denman Road out there?
Denman Road, and then it turns into Baker.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would, okay. Yeah, I would, I got confused with that one, thinking it was Cornerstone. And so, yeah, I would agree with all three being removed.
Thank you. Anyone else? Everybody's in agreement here, huh? Okay, good. And Councilmember Healy? Looks like you're already fed.
So, in terms of removing the expansion areas, I'm open to that. But I would say that since we do have some property owners who are rattling their cages a little bit, I think the SEQA needs to be bulletproof if we're going to go that way. So, I'm open to that, and let's have that conversation when you bring it back.
Thank you. And I too am supportive of all the key staff recommendations. I'd want to add the timeline request, the accelerate the timeline. And then also, if we do, in a revised, in a later date, if we talk about deletions of areas, I'd like to have an alternate, like what's the impact to us of doing, you know, if we stay, in what way that will help get us on the ballot, and what way it will help us delay us from the ballot, and what way it would shift us environmentally in a SEQA sense. So, just an evaluation of that. So, yes, thank you. And then the two other points I wanted to make, because I did appreciate where we saw that Petaluma's current smart station is the most active smart station in the system. And I think that that should be notable, that Petaluma is all in for smart. And I would accept, expect that the Corona Station would be the same kind of magnet for people in Petaluma and have just as robust of use, which really hits us on our climate goals for how to get people into, engaged in that. And then lastly, I just want to throw a little barb at Green Belt. We've been getting emails of support of this from Juno to Larry, I think. You know, just, everybody is sending us emails, and the gist of them is, don't let us be the first to fail. I really wish the tone had been, we really respect the overwhelming will that Petaluma will not let this. I mean, politically, we are all in on all this, and like to have that message advocated by Green Belt as well. So, with that, I think we have made our comments. The staff have, feel good about the workshop? Wonderful presentation. Councilmember Kater Thompson?
I just want to remind people, you know, every time my cousin comes to Petaluma from the city, she always sees in between Petaluma and Nevada, it's green. And then you go in between, you know, Petaluma and Katati, you know, you have green space. And unlike, you know, Cupertino, you don't know if you're in Cupertino, Sunnyvale, or wherever you're at. And so, just people really appreciate the saving land around us. And it's a good feeling that we've done well. That's it.
And we owe quite a bit to all those who came before us and put this in place. So, thank you very much. And with that, we are adjourned for the evening.